The clerk will call the roll to record attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
I'm here.
Bartley? Rainey?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Leahy?
Evening Brenna, I'm here.
Hi Jim. LeBron Martinez? Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
So the first item on the agenda is the laid on the table item, uh, laid on the table, any?
Motion to take it up off the table?
Motion is to take off the table, I heard a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You're going to pass the second reading.
Second.
Is to pass the second reading, uh, under discussion, Council McGivern to give an update on, on the grant.
Thank you, Mr. President, we did, uh, latest on the table two meetings ago, it missed the, uh, agenda last meeting, so we waited, uh, carefully until this meeting. This is a canal industrial grant. Um, it's a grant of twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the Mass Historical Commission. The grant is part of a ongoing project and, uh, inventory of the canal area. Both, uh, buildings that are available for, uh, for development and projects that are available for development. The, uh, Finance Committee had, uh, recommended on a, I believe it was a four zero one vote to, uh, to adopt it. And at the last, at the meeting that we took it up and we passed the first reading, we did not have the two thirds vote for two readings that evening. So we, uh, we asked that the, uh, City Council would, uh, relook at this tonight and, uh, take the final vote of the second reading itself.
Any further discussion? Let me look to see if there's hands. I don't see any hands up. Alright, so a motion is to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant, vote no, you're voting against.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yep.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez? Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Toman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Twelve ayes.
But your vote, you approved it, uh, public comment. I don't have any emails, Ryan, do you have anyone in the waiting room? I don't see anyone, but just checking.
I don't touch.
Okay. Uh, so there's no one here for public comment, uh, off to communications, item two is from the mayor. It's a veto of the proposed one hundred and sixty seventh amendment to the chapter two of the city charter.
Make a motion to receive.
Second. Make a motion to override.
Second.
That order, that motion's out of order, Mr. President.
So, the motion was to receive, we didn't vote on it yet, it was seconded. Um, and then there was a second motion to override, that was seconded as well, so.
Mr. President?
Uh, Counselor Rainey, go ahead.
Yeah, how can we vote to, oh, uh, on a proposed? It's a proposal, it's not, it's not a, uh, uh, an over, or it's not a, it's not a veto, it's a proposed veto. I mean, I think we, don't we override it or get a chance? Who among us has the guts to override it when it becomes a, an actual, uh, proposal? Or when it becomes an actual, uh, order?
Well, I do believe this is the one that we passed last meeting with regards to, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm just reading the letter now, with regards to the overtime oversight?
Correct.
From ordinance. So that's the one, Counselor Rainey, if you, if that's the one you're referring to, so make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, because this one is, with the power vested in me, the citizens of Hoyok, in accordance to chapter twenty-four, uh, of Charter Three of the Code of Ordinances, I am exercising my veto power over the proposed one hundred and sixty-seventh amendment to chapter two of the city charter. While I respect the legislative authority of the council to oversee the financial expenditures of the city, I believe that the passage of this ordinance in the midst of our ongoing public health emergency and risk, uh, the sound of operations of the city government and the health and the well-being of the citizens, uh, of Hoyok, I humblely request that should you still aim to put forth the ordinance, I would wait until conclusion of the public health emergency, sincerely, uh, Alex B. Morris, the mayor. So that's, that was the one that he vetoed, Counselor Rainey.
Okay.
So Counselor Bacon, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I had the impression from the mayor's letter that given that the language within the ordinance itself was not changed, but that on the floor we had delayed the implementation of the ordinance until January may not have been recognized by the mayor, because he doesn't refer to it in his veto. And that was basically the reason why we have delayed the implementation of it until January, so it seemed like maybe he wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, he says in the letter, uh, until the conclusion of the public health emergency, so maybe he did not know that.
Right, so.
It said it right on the order, just so you know.
So it was on the order?
Yep.
Counselor Bacon?
Okay, I just wasn't sure because it wasn't in the ordinance language, we didn't amend that. So I wasn't sure if he was aware of the January, but I think that was our intention was to get past the worst of the crisis relative to that ordinance, thank you.
Yeah, I do recall that we, we put that in the language, we did approve that in the language. Uh, next was Counselor McGivern, and then Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, the reason I said that the motion's out of order, and I think everyone knows I voted in favor of this, and as amended, and, and we worked, uh, uh, the, the ordinance committee worked hard on it, we all worked hard on trying to, uh, do something that was a compromise, well, you know, is an, and in budgets, uh, a problem with monies being transferred around. And we, as a city council, not knowing our full, with the full intent of the original budget. Um, I don't want to, I also have, you know, thought about, and, and made, you know, remarks about the fact that sometimes this is micromanaging, but unfortunately, we've been put in this position too many times by certain departments. But the reason I, I'm challenging the order of the motion and the veto is we, we have a problem, the mayor never signed this order. This is a chapter two amendment, we cannot amend chapter two without the mayor's signature. Uh, typically, we've asked the mayors to sign a ordinance for a chapter two change prior to us voting on it. Occasionally, that doesn't happen, this is one of those occasions. And because he's choosing not to, to sign it, we have no signature for chapter two whatsoever. Therefore, on my understanding, or at least from past president, that means we cannot act on it.
We can suspend the rules and ask legal. If that's what the group would like to do. Counselor, hold on, Counselor Bacon, you had a question?
Well, I would just note that when we passed the first ordinance, we did not do it that way.
That's correct, but he did not, he did not veto it, and he eventually signed it because it became law.
Right, so if, if we override his veto, then he will either sign it or not, I guess.
I don't think we can act on it without his signature.
Well, hold on, what, what we'll do is, I know Counselor Murphy, you had your hand up and then it, it left, are you still?
Let's suspend the rules unless the city solicitor let us know on that before I have my conversation, if that's okay.
So the motion is to allow the city solicitor to comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Crystal, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
I can hear you, how are you?
Good, so I'm looking at council rules, which I'm assuming is where your chapter two uh, regulations are coming in, I don't know if Joe wants to weigh in where he's getting.
I believe this is a charter, Crystal.
Yeah, charter.
Alright, give me two seconds then.
I could be wrong, but it's been, I know it's past precedent.
You've got ordinances involving expenditures in excess of two hundred. Presentation of ordinance orders to the mayor for approval, mayor's veto power, hang on, we're getting there.
Crystal, I think it's in section twenty-four.
That's what I was just reading, but it's not there, that's just his, um, veto power. Doesn't say anything in regards to whether or not the chapter two administration stuff can be changed with or without him, it just gives him the power to veto.
Alright, how about section one through five ordinances, um, subsection seventeen regarding, um, presenting ordinances to mayor for his approval, his veto power.
It just gives him, uh, the power to hire and fire. You're talking about section twenty-five? I mean, I think the idea is that chapter two is our administration, so it's a lot of our employees. And I think making any amendments to that, you certainly need approval of the mayor, because he sort of controls the, uh, employees ultimately. So I think that's where that may come in, but as far as everything in chapter two, I don't know where the language for that would come from, that he would have to sign it. Does that make sense?
Sounds good to me.
I did, if I could, Mr. President.
Yeah, Counselor Bacon has a question.
I think that's part of it, I think the, the premise is that if, if we use, most chapter two requires an expenditure, we cannot appropriate money without the mayor's approval. I, I understand that this is more of a transfer, but transfers are appropriations. And when we don't get the mayor to allow us to amend something that, that requires an expenditure or some type of appropriation even by transfer, we're not allowed to do it on our own, we need his permission to act on it upfront, he can still veto it. But if he doesn't give us our permission to take a final vote, we're not, I don't think we're allowed to do it. That's the way it's been handled in the past.
I mean, it is definitely a, a combination, so chapter two is all of our administration, it's all of your officers, employees, departments, boards, commissions, et cetera, so section twenty-six of the charter gives the payer, the mayor, power of appointment and removal of officers. So it makes sense that any amendments in chapter two would have to go through the mayor, because he's obviously going to have that ultimate control over employees. And I agree with Joe in that, um, any expenditures over two hundred dollars is a whole other section that requires mayor approval. This is sort of like, like an oddball, because it doesn't speak to the hiring and firing, it doesn't speak to any specific appropriation.
Well, Crystal, if I, maybe I'm, if I could through the president. In subsection twenty-four, it says every ordinance, order, resolution, or vote of the city council except such as relates to its own internal affairs or to, uh, officers or employees shall be presented to the mayor. If, if he approves, therefore, he shall signify, um, or sign his approval by signing his, uh, the same. But if not, he shall return the same with his objections to the city council, who shall allow enter the objections of the mayor at length upon into the records and proceed to reconsider said ordinance, order, resolution, vote.
Which is what we're doing.
Which I think is what we're doing.
Right, so that's what he did, he submitted his veto, so we're trying to see if in general, he had to do that or whether or not he has to sign because it's a change to chapter two. Which is how, as Joe was stating, precedent has always said that chapter two, because mayor has sort of the ultimate control of employees needs mayor signature, and this veto section does not apply. So this is sort of an oddity, because it's amending chapter two, but it's outside of the bounds of what he really has control over, because there's no appropriation, and it's not discussing hiring and firing of employees. Correct. So I don't know if anyone else wants to interpret differently, um.
I think the motion's in order.
I just don't see anything specific to any chapter two amendment requires, you know, mayor approval first.
Right.
So with that, I'm just going to go to Counselor Murphy, then Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Crystal, I know it was a little bit confusing, but I do think, uh, we can move on this, a couple of things. Uh, number one, I was one of the counselors to recommend that we move it to January first, two thousand and twenty-one, so we gave uh, department heads and the administration time to make sure we weren't putting somebody in a crunch. Uh, when I got the veto message, I sent a message to the mayor asking, that, does this imply that, uh, you would, uh, approve it once this, uh, virus is over, I have not heard from him, it's kind of disappointing that, uh, we, I have not, any, had any response from that, uh. But the other factor is, I mean, we're not, I don't think we are putting, uh, as the mayor is indicating, uh, we're not putting, uh, sound operations in city government uh, in jeopardy, we're not putting the health and well-being of the citizens of Hoyok in jeopardy. Basically, we're just asking when you get into a situation where you know overtime is getting low, then you should be, as an administrator, as a department director, you should be looking to make sure that you are planning for that. And this would just allow the city council to be part of what's going on, knowing why it's happening uh, and dealing with it beforehand, rather than coming to getting the report of the fiscal year in April and May and finding out that someone has spent, you know, fifty percent, a hundred percent, two hundred percent more than what they had in their budget. I think the, the order makes sense from an administrative standpoint. Uh, I, I, I would not have a problem if we wanted to extend the date, but, but right now, I don't want to do that, because obviously, that would be changing this whole scenario. I think we've tried to make it realistic for department heads uh, to be good administrators, to watch their budget, I'm sure they get the audit reports from, from the auditor, the, the same thing that we get, which pretty clearly explain where you are, and if you are in that jeopardy, uh, in terms of needing to transfer money for overtime. So I'm all in favor of overriding the, the mayor's veto, thank you.
Counselor Bartley, you had your hand up, but it's down, or?
I, I had my hand up, yeah, I, I took it down because you recognized me already, so, um, so I'm ready, you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm just making some notes here, because there's, uh, there's a lot going on, so, uh, uh, so I'll, I'll, I'm going to be brief, uh, uh, first of all, thank you to the mayor for, um, for, for giving it, for, for A, responding, and giving us some feedback, so, I, I think the second paragraph at least gave, gave me some insight as to as to his reasoning, um, unlike the, um, past things, and, and, and please, please see my comments from the last meeting, where I pointed out three specific occasions where, where the mayor just completely ignored committee reports, and we, we heard, and, and hopefully during president's report, but we'll hear some feedback as to whether the, the mayor's going to start coming, or at least have a representative, come to committee meetings. You, you'll note, you'll note that prior to this veto, the mayor wasn't at any ordinance meeting relative to this matter. Like, I don't remember the mayor's last time he was at any city council subcommittee meeting, uh, so I, I think that's why you, you need to have some feedback from, from the mayor's office, and I hope I'm not being mean. I don't want, I'm not intending to be mean, Mr. President, okay, I just want to, just pointing some things out coolly and calmly that we need to have feedback while the process is ongoing, instead of these last minute last second hail mary passes, which, uh, A, was a veto, and now, now B, on, on this, um. So I, I, I guess, and that's just food for thought, or, or don't think about it, whatever you want to do. Um, I, I'm of the opinion that we can move forward with this tonight, but I, I would hate to be caught flat-footed. So I would have no problem with the vote that I have, to lay this on the table, so that we're not having the city solicitor you know, scramble around to the ordinance book while we're in the middle of a meeting. It, it would have been nice if this potential objection was raised prior to, you know, seven fifteen, but you know, it wasn't, and that's okay, it's all, it's all good. Um, but, you know, this is, this is where we are, and, and we're going to make a decision where everybody but one counselor voted for this. So counselors, if they're not going to override it, they're going to have to change their position. Because I, I think the word five counselor nailed on the head, I, I mean, we, we, we amended it, and the word two counselor did too, we amended it to January first just in regard to, to the pandemic, so I, for one, would like to have a ruling from the council president as to whether this, this is a, a legit, legitimate, uh, uh, legitimate, um, uh, violation of our rules, or if unsure the rules, and that's perfectly reasonable, that the council president would give us some guidance and say, well, it's, it's my, it's my, uh, suggestion to you counselors, that we lay it on the table until we get, uh, we allow the solicitor to coolly and rationally review the uh, charter and or ordinances, so we can get a, a clear perspective on how to move forward. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, seeing my name, without my name being said was brought up. I did, um, ask, I did object, I'm sorry, object to the motion this evening. And I, I'd questioned, you know, the chapter two part anytime it comes in before us. I was surprised when I saw the written ordinance, uh, in the package, that it, this is part of chapter two. Because, again, as I stated, it's, it's a appropriation by transfer in the middle of the year that doesn't come to us, which is, which is a difference, so if that, if there's any question as to why I'm objecting to it tonight, that's the reason why I'm objecting to it tonight. I do agree with Counselor Bartley, because this is not our rules, Mr. President, and I do ask for a point of order, or I would be agreeable to lay it on the table and allow the, uh, law department to explore both the charter and mass finance. And I think where you're going to find it is a combination between, because again, we cannot write a law that requires an appropriation without being given upfront approval for the mayor to, from the mayor, to allow us to do that.
Anyone further? See, no one, oh, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, I, I, I don't see us in this particular case uh, approving an appropriation. We're not starting an appropriation, we're not approving an appropriation, we're creating a path for, uh, a department head to request an overtime be transferred, and the mayor coming to the city council, so I don't see us actually initiating an appropriation situation uh, with this, with this particular ordinance, I think we're just trying to make sure that as Counselor McGivern said, that we know what's going on, and that we're not trying to micromanage, we're just trying to make sure that we know what money is being used and for what, and to probably get a better handle on it, so, you know, I mean, if we I just don't see it as an appropriation that we're doing. There's no money in this ordinance whatsoever.
Mr. President? Uh, hold on, Counselor Rainey, Counselor Sullivan, then Counselor Rainey.
Yep. Well, th- thank you, and I, I agree with everything Counselor Murphy just said about this not being an appropriation, when we go through our budget process we specifically cut overtime. So for, to, to, to be able to take money from any other account and just transfer in there to fill that however they want, where, whenever he wants, with, from whatever other line item that we only have one shot at each year, is just flat out wrong. I think his letter to us and his explanation is as flimsy as it gets. Right, I'm, I'm going to quote from the letter exactly. This would risk the sound operation of city government and the health and well-being of the citizens. So I'm looking at the police overtime money that was paid out in twenty nineteen, alright, I'm not going to use any names. But in order to achieve some of these numbers, some of these officers are working three thousand hours a year. That's fifty-two consecutive weeks of over sixty hours a week. That's, th- they're, under the stress that the police are already under to be putting in that kind of hours and that kind of overtime, it's not healthy for them. And it's not, this is supposed to be out protecting. Number one, when you look at it, and the numbers are outrageous, alright? Sixty thousand dollars for Walser in regular overtime. Not Shannon Grant, not Task Force, not anything else, not, not roadwork, anything. So, for the city council, needs to get their hands around this, this, this is completely outrageous. And as far as the COVID, uh, emergency, if it, if it was so severe right now, and there was so much worry about it, I just saw this week, an adverti, you know, a, an advertisement in the Hoyok Sun for art for CBG money in the middle of a pandemic, for artwork on abandoned electrical stanchions in, in the downtown area. So if there is such a worry about this and about needing the cash reserves, why are we going ahead with these programs? It, it just makes no sense at all.
Counselor Rainey?
Yeah, from an accountability perspective, this order that we passed makes good sense, and I think we should vote to override tonight.
Alright, so, anyone else? So with that, uh, Counselor McGivern, you had a question?
Just again, it, it's a transfer to appropriate, it's, it's appropriating money from one line item into another, there's no question it's an appropriation. Um, I, I'm in favor of this, for all the reasons that have been stated, I just don't want to see us, the class doing something that we're not allowed to do this way. And I just think that tabling it for one meeting and letting the city solicitor give us a ruling is the, the prudent way to go, so therefore, I table the, uh, second by Mr. Counselor Bartley.
So.
I second the table, Mr. Bartley.
Oh, I, I didn't make the motion.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
Second.
So the motion was to table, is seconded, it's non-debatable. So with that, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
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 All those against?
No.
I'd say the ayes have it.
Uh, can you take a show of hands, please?
Uh, request for a show of hands, if you're voting to table, please raise your hand on the screen so I can count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I have eight.
Okay, thank you.
So. So with that, that is tabled. One, two. See here. So, just for one question for the, the members, even though it is tabled, we do want a legal response with regards to that matter, do we not?
Yes.
Alright, so, Crystal, can we have a legal response with regards to the question by the members?
Well then.
Yeah, we'll need that by the eleven-four, twenty-twenty meeting.
That's fine.
Can somebody mute themselves, there's a background noise.
Yeah, I think, I think it's Libby, Libby, can you get, there you go. There you go.
Sorry, sorry.
Alright, so next is item three, which is a letter reappointing.
I make a motion to reappoint, uh, Jeremy Smith?
Second.
It's reappointing Jeremy Smith of forty-five Hillside Ave to serve a three-year term, which will expire February twenty twenty-three as the Library Board of Directors. So motion is to reconfirm, all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Four is from the mayor, it's a letter, uh, regarding the Hotel Jess tax incentive application.
Make, uh, motion to receive and send a copy to finance?
Second.
Motion is receive and send to finance?
Send it to DGR, because that's where.
DGR.
DGR.
To DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel McGivern, you have a question or is that from fire?
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, no worries. Just making sure.
Mouse is not working.
Alright. Five is a communication from the, uh,
Receive, I believe we all got a copy.
Did everyone get a copy of this? This is the open mail.
Second.
So motion is asked to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, everyone's got a copy. Six is the minutes from the September fifteenth and October sixth meeting.
Make a motion to receive. I believe we all got a copy. Second.
Motion is receive. Make sure everyone has a copy.
No, I think we all got a copy.
Oh, you all did. Okay, I thought you said get a copy. Alright. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven is from the city clerk. It's the MMC communication regarding upcoming election.
Make a motion to receive.
And.
So hold on, what, receive to finance, I heard, or what was that? I missed that.
Maybe public service?
For what?
Receive and send to public service?
Oh yeah, receive, public service, okay. Counselor Bacon.
Um, yes, and I was just wondering if it could be posted on the website too, because it's really good information.
Very true.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
So it's a public service and posting on the webpage. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Brenna.
Eight is from Greg Neffinger. If I'm saying that correct, Art Tech for a special permit of forty Lyman Street and its concerns regarding sending it back to committee.
Mr. Murphy, do you ordinance committee?
So two ordinance, all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Nine is from Edward Owen of seventy-eight Hill Street, West Springfield, Mass. Uh, requesting H A R to remove property at one twenty-fourth street from the list of blighted and underused uh, property or building.
Receive, send to DGR.
DGNR.
So send to DGNR. Alls in favor?
Aye.
I.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Gray.
I just had a question on that. Does the writer of this letter own the property?
Yes.
Yes, I do believe so, but we can get that answered.
He does own it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, ten is a letter from Doris Bardwell, rega-, uh, it's a gratitude. Gratitude for actions for the October meeting. Motion is to receive.
Second.
In favor?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counsel Murphy, sorry.
Yeah, I, I mean, there was a big article in the Boston Globe today about Fa-, uh, Farron and, and the Mount St. Vincent and, uh, I mean, this is just, uh, I mean, I know she's appreciative of what we tried to do and I don't know what else we can do, but it's just, uh, a travesty of, uh, concern for human beings. Uh, concern for, uh, employees that have de- dedicated their lives to providing care. Uh, it's a, it's a concern in terms of what we're gonna basically be in a situation where we're gonna move patients or, or residents who have lived at Mount St. Vincent in order to be able to make more money by bringing in the people from, from Farron. I mean, this is just, uh, I'm not a huge, uh, Medicare for All person, but this is a, a perfect example of what needs to be changed in our compassion of their human healthcare. Uh, and I, I, again, I don't know what we can do. I know the Department of Public Health keeps asking them to come up with another plan uh, in terms of how they're gonna close it, how they're going to offer people. And I think they now gave them sometime in December, uh, from what the article in the Globe was talking about. Uh, but again, this is, I mean, we need to do, and I, I don't know what we can do. I know we sent a letter. I know you wrote a nice letter and we sent a letter out. Uh, I know Senator Vliss and Representative Vega have been on it. Uh, you know, there's, we're, we're going from a nonprofit entity to a for-profit entity. And we're basically saying we want more money and those people that have been getting the, the healthcare in this residence, you know, we're sorry, but you're gonna have to leave. And, and to do all that when we are in a health situation with the pandemic and we're dealing with people that need healthcare. Uh, all of those things, just, I mean, I it just makes you so angry about what's going on. And again, whatever we can do and whatever anybody listening to this, if you've got any authority, uh, please use whatever you can. Uh, and, and let's, let's try to stop this. At least hold it up until we get through this pandemic. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern?
I, uh, I agree and concur with Counsel Murphy, but I also wanna take it a step forward and remind everyone it's, it's not just about COVID. It is an economic thing. It's, it's one, uh, owner selling out a a not-for-profit Mount St. Vincent, they're closing a Farron, which is is for profit because it does get more money for the type of, uh, patients that they handle. And bringing the type of patients into a city that is saturated with D H N, saturated with psych beds, saturated with the, uh, the, this type of patient from another county that's not even our, not even our neighbors, from Franklin County. And then I, I really think that that's, you know, the point that DPH would like to ignore and just talk about delaying this for COVID and doing it after COVID. That's not right either. Because we, we have too many beds. We have too many B HNs. We have too much saturation of, of being the, being, offering the, the, the treatment that is needed for, for substance abuse, the treatment that is needed for psych. But when you got a court ordered person who happens to be a sex offender at Farron, being told they're gonna be transferred into a neighborhood next to a school, that's a major problem. I'm not saying that's happening. But this is what Farron deals with and there's a possibility there that that could happen or those referrals could happen in the future. Mr. President, Doris Bardwell and Barbara Giroux were the ones that brought this first to some of our attention and then we were at the last minute able to get, make the DPH hearing. I, I think the city council did make a big, a, a great vote at our last meeting to help out this cause. Uh, both Doris and Barbara Giroux would like a copy of the letter that you sent to DB, DPH. They've kept a portfolio. The work that they're doing is incredible. And, and now that, you know, the Boston Globe, the Springfield Republican, the media is picking up on this, I think DPH, D, DPH is starting to listen. And I, I, I believe, you know, for maybe one of the few times, a vote like this did make a difference on the city council. Because we're on record saying, hold the press. There's something wrong here. So if we could get a copy of the letter to Doris and Barbara, I'd appreciate it. Or if Brian can get a copy of it to me, I'll get it to them.
Great. Ryan, can you get the final version over to Counsel McGivern so we can get it over to those people?
Yep, sure.
The Counsel Lacy.
Thank you. Um, I just want to note that, uh, the same narrative that Counselor Murphy just offered in terms of, um, you know, one entity, um, being turned over to another entity. Um, and you know, the, the profit motive really driving, um, care and for whom um, is, we're, we're going to care for, uh, that same narrative could be applied to the birthing unit at Holyoke Medical Center. And I think that it really does speak to a flaw in the way that, um, healthcare is uh, acquired and then also accessed in our country. And I think we're seeing the effects, um, ri- right here in Holyoke at the local level. And those people who, who are most in need in care are being, um, pushed out to the margins, finding it more and more difficult to actually find the care that they need and access it. And uh, you know, I do think that it speaks to some bigger issues. I do wanna note that, um, DPH, um, was very sympathetic to the members of the public who spoke out against the um, medical center, um, closure of the, of the birthing unit and found that the birthing unit was in fact an, an essential um, service. And yet I believe that the medical center was still able to move forward and, um, shut do- shut the doors there. Meanwhile, this city council has, uh, not heard any response back. I mean, and that's like the other piece of it all, like in, in all these sort of like private transfers. Um, you know, the city council can make its opinion heard and, and sort of represent public opinion. Um, but we, and it seems also at the state level, DPH, we, we clearly don't have any teeth to make a dent or, or impact in these outcomes. I hope that's not the case here. I hope that, um, we are going to get a better response on, on this matter than what we did with the medical center, but um, I, I think they're, they're basically different arms of the same, uh, instrument. And, uh, they, they speak to the, you know, some real sort of large-scale systemic uh, problems again with the way that we, um, acquire and um, access, uh, the care that we need as, as a society. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, hold on, Counsel Gray. Counsel Bacon, your hands up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanna make a brief comment, um, relative to the current discussion. I see the Farron issue and the Mount St. Vincent issue is very different from the Holyoke Medical Center issue. And I did, uh, take the opportunity to sit down with our CEO of Holyoke Medical Center to un- and what drove some of the actions there. And he provided me with some really important statistics. And it has to do with the choices that people in our community make. And over the years, the people in our community had chosen to go to medical centers where they had more intensive care facilities relative to higher-risk births. And so in order to provide a health service and do it in a competent and safe manner, you have to provide enough of it to maintain a competency and to maintain, uh, the ability to afford to offer the service. And so I gained a lot of insight from sitting down with him. It took a while to get the information put together. But I just wanna say that I think these are two very, very different situations. And I think our medical center is really trying to be a good citizen in our community and trying to do the best thing to survive and also offer services that are needed by the community. So I would urge my colleagues to, um, gain more information in this regard if they're so inclined. Thank you.
Counselor Gray.
Yeah, uh, just to make a quick comment, the seniors at Mount St. Vincent for the most part have paid into social security and Medicare all their lives. So they deserve better treatment than this. We know nothing about the people who are coming in from uh, Franklin County or Greenfield or something like that. But I know our senior citizens that are at Mount St. Vincent, most of them have paid for the services they're receiving all their life and they deserve better treatment. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I know, I'm, I'm one that I don't like, I mean, we're, we're discussing item number ten. And I just, I, I feel the need that I, I have to, um, touch a little bit on the birthing center. Um, first of all, I don't appreciate how the CEO wanted to talk to, uh, let's see, city counselors on a one-to-one basis. And regarding the information that he's gonna provide to us on a one-on-one conversation is not doing justice to a community who he should hold to. Okay, so he needs to discuss this with the community that he is, uh, let's see, servicing. He serviced the city of Holyoke. Not thirteen, just thirteen counselors. The city of Holyoke. We have invited him to city council and he did not come in. He needs to speak to the city. That means every single one of these residents who goes to sit, the Holyoke Medical Center, who asks for their services there. He needs to report to the city of Holyoke, not just to us, not one-on-one, to every single one of us. He should have been in a meeting with us, talking about removing the, the, the birthing center. That's a disservice to this community.
Counsel Lacy.
Um, thanks. I do want to note that I understand the census numbers that the medical center is using today, um, but I think that there is a larger story that the community deserves to hear um, regarding how those census numbers became so depressed. So, you know, why did people begin to opt out of Holyoke? Um, you know, mid- midwifery care when it had a valley-wide reputation at one point in time for exceptional service. So what, what happened that drove people away? I mean, tho- that's all part of the story. Um, what sort of services are being expanded? Um, you know, it's probably, uh, more lucrative services as opposed to, uh, you know, I, I would imagine that, uh, birthing at the birthing center um, in Holyoke was probably a lot of Medicaid dollars as opposed to private. Um, and, and again, more lucrative, um, insurance funds. So again, my, my point of the story here is not to pick pieces out. I mean, clearly I submitted, I know I submitted. I don't know if other counselors did, but a, a, a list of very, uh, important questions about um, how we got to this point with the medical center and where we're going. I mean, that's, that's the most important question that I think is left on the table. Um, like where is the medical center's future? And how is it going to impact the city of Holyoke? How can we brace ourselves if we need to for, um, you know, what's, what's down the road? Um, but I, I do think that, you know, the, the, the private insurance-driven profit models of healthcare are, are at the end of the day, just not providing the, the care um, and meeting the needs of our residents and, you know, of our nation at the end of the day. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as a, uh, as a father of three children that were all born in the Holyoke Medical Center, uh, it's, it's certainly a touching place for, uh, for me. Um, because I, I did, or my wife had three children at, at the hospital. We had a great time uh, and the great service and they were wonderful. Um, however, um, and I do agree with a lot of what people are saying. Um, uh, but I think this should be filed under a separate order. Right now, we're talking about item number ten, which is a thank you note. And we've talked maybe about nine minutes on this. Um, I do think it's worthy of a conversation, but I think it deserves its own order. Thank you.
Good point.
So with that, that is done for ten. We now have item eleven, which is from Guy O'Donnell. It's a letter re- uh, supporter of the Hens in the city of Holyoke.
Make a motion to receive. And ordinance.
To receive, send to ordinance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is petitions. Petition from Edward Gelik, uh, renewal of a home occupancy at occupation at nineteen Concord Ave.
I make a motion to, uh, renew it. He's a great man.
Second. Motion is to grant the renewal, just tech, checking all taxes are up to date. Um, for this, do we do a roll call for this? Brenna, for the renewal?
I think so.
Yeah, I think we do a roll call.
Yes.
So, so clerk will call a roll if you you vote, yes, you're voting for the renewal of the business license at nineteen Concord Ave.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley? Bartley?
He's muted.
Gray?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We approve, we approve the renewal of the license. President's report. Uh, one, I do believe everyone got a email from Olivia Mazol, which is the tours, uh, uh, for the city of Holyoke. Uh, the next one, that would be Pulaski Park Tour, the Ashley Reservoir Tour, Veterans Park Tour, so on and so forth. Uh, I do believe everyone got this, but that's just the tours that they'll be doing.
Mr. President, I didn't receive those emails.
Alright, I'll, I'll have that, um, sent over to you, Counsel Gray.
Thank you. I'm missing a lot of emails as a matter of fact. My, uh, email address is public record. Thank you.
Alright, just making a note that I'll get that over to you. Did anyone else not receive that? No? Okay. Uh, two, we did have an issue, uh, with regards to access to city hall, or at least maybe one or two of us did in the sense of the security wasn't letting in. I did speak to the mayor on that. We did call the security company. Uh, it appears that the regular person that was on duty is now gone and they put a new person in and they were being a little too strict on what they thought an employee was. So no one for city council should have any more issues about getting into the building. Um, so hopefully that's cleared up. Uh, with regards, Counsel Murphy, yep.
I, I know, uh, when we had a public safety meeting.
I n- I know uh when we had a public safety meeting and Sean was there talking about city hall access, he had talked about the potential to start doing appointments for for citizens to come in and and have appointments. Is, do you know if that's going on yet, or are we still?
My last conversation, I do believe City Hall is still closed to the public.
Okay.
I think, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Council Lisi.
Thank you. I think from what I understand, it's closed to people just walking in off the street, but um individual departments may be setting up meetings, like if you needed to pick up a license or a permit or or something like that, then um scheduled pickups are happening for for members of the public. But uh mostly any sort of thing uh in terms of the forms and paperwork, that is um online. So people shouldn't need to come into City Hall to to get what they need. Um and a lot of these um, you know, permits and forms are being a filed electronically. So it's only if you actually need something in hand um where where people are coming into the building uh and it's unscheduled um appointments.
Yeah, you can call in to get it and they'll bring it down and through security, they'll get you the the information or forms, whatever you need. Um there was confusion in the sense of uh people coming in for early voting downstairs and then walking upstairs to different offices saying, well, we're already in the building. Uh so they're trying to fix that type of uh glitch as well. It's it's just early voting and you're supposed to exit the building right away. Uh with regards to the conversation with the mayor, I did reach out to him as requested by the council because certain uh meetings were missed. Um we did chat about it in the sense of whether or not he did get the information. There was a little uh difference uh as with regards to the invite in the sense of if he was required to be there or not, or since he had other department heads going, he figured they were gonna be there on his behalf. So I did ask him uh if he does get emails. If not, if there's something that's urgent, I can always text them or try and get the communication in that in order to get us all on the same page. So I did reach out to him as requested and hopefully in the near future, these type of issues won't be be missed. Um finally, I will like to thank the clerk's office for all that they're doing with regards to early voting, uh especially all the volunteers. I'm not sure if everyone understands this. Um the clerk's office had a request for seven thousand votes, seven thousand, of which people kept emailing. I got the emails. I think everyone else got emails. Where's my ballot? Why isn't my ballot coming in? You can't get a ballot until the state gives the clerk the ballots, and that's what they were waiting for. Other communities, what Springfield got um and so on and so forth, which then put a, you know, why wasn't Hoyoke getting them? Once again, it was for the state to drop them off. And when they did finally get them, it took the clerk two days in order to get every ballot out in order to meet meet the demand. Uh Devin Sheehan, I want to personally thank him. He volunteered his time, came in for like a day and a half and sat for the entire day stuffing envelopes and getting things done. Patty Devine, our our former colleague. So it was a phenomenal job by the clerk's office, but all the people who volunteered their time to come in and actually help get those ballots out, and within two days, seven thousand ballots went out. Uh I do know, I think it was for the last presidential election, and I could be wrong, the clerk is here. I think it was like seven hundred were ballots that were sent out for that election. This was seven thousand that that was gotten or or in essence, gotten out to the voter. So I I want to thank the clerk's office as well as all those volunteers. Absolutely remarkable job. Um for uh for anyone else that I missed something, Council Lisi, I see your hand up.
Well, I, you know, I was just wondering if, because we are in the midst of this really unique um, you know, moment in history where we have the pandemic and early voting and mail-in voting, if um the clerk just wanted to give um a sh- a brief synopsis of of what's happening now, when that ends, and then um can people still apply for mail-in ballots and um when the last day to get them in would be and things like that.
But make a motion to allow the clerk to answer. Gladys, uh Council Bar Martinez, sorry, I I see your hand. I'll get to you in in one second. So motion is allow the clerk to answer. All those in favor?
Thank you. Um so just like Todd said, we did have a handful of volunteers that came in and helped us get all the ballots out. Um it was right prior to the long um weekend we just had, and we had gotten the ballots late in the afternoon on Wednesday. And so my goal was to get them all out by that Friday afternoon, so everybody that had requested one um would have it over the weekend or by Tuesday. So we were able to do that, and I was very thankful. I did get just tons of people reaching out, volunteering their time. Um we utilized some of our poll workers and we used the grant money to pay some of them that we just received. So it worked out really well. Um and we've actually, we're now up to about eight thousand ballots mailed. And early voting started on Mon- uh Saturday. So we've run Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and today we've done, we had about, I'd say like close to five hundred people come in and vote early um in person. We um will continue doing that through the rest of this week and both Saturday and Sunday, all the way up until next Friday, the thirtieth. We'll have in-person early voting. Um you can request a mail-in ballot up until October twenty-eighth at five P M. Um after that, we cannot accept any more applications, not even postmarked. And the last day to register to vote is um this weekend um on Saturday. So we've moved our early voting to later in the afternoon to accommodate people that want to come in and register to vote um in person as well. So that will happen. And then, of course, some of the new legislation that people might not be aware is we can accept ballots um on Election Day up until eight P M. But after Election Day, we have to accept ballots postmarked um November third up until five P M on November sixth. And then sometime after November sixth, um we have to post online when we're going to be counting the rest of those ballots that we receive postmarked from the third at eight P M until the sixth. So everything's going pretty well as of right now. Um it definitely is quite different than any election we've seen in my almost, you know, seven, eight years here. Um but I'm lucky. I have a really good team behind me and we're just plugging away at it the best we can.
Thanks. So the, I guess the main takeaway then, or you could still register to vote up until this Saturday. Um in-person voting is happening only at City Hall. Am I correct? Only at City Hall up until this weekend, Sunday?
Nope, it goes through this weekend all the way till the thirtieth.
To the thirtieth?
Yeah.
I'm jumping the gun here. Through the thirtieth and um whether you, i- if you receive a mail-in ballot, you can mail it in or hand it in in person. Uh if you're handing it in in person, it has to be up until Election Day and then it can be stamp marked on Election Day and received up until the sixth.
Great.
Okay. Thanks for that.
And of course, we have the Dropbox in the back of City Hall that um seems to be a really popular option. Yeah, Juan used it today. Um a really popular option with people. Um we've been checking it pretty much every hour on the hour and every time we check it, there's literally twenty-five to fifty ballots in there every time. So it's really been a popular option with people. Um I think they just feel safer that they know it's going to get right into our hands directly than sending it through the post office, I guess. I don't, people just really seem to be utilizing it, which is great.
All right, Peter.
Thanks for all your work.
All right, Peter.
Ca- Council Graney.
Yeah, just.
I've been ignored twice.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Glass. I had written down. I'll get right to you. Sorry, sorry, Gladys.
I just want to give kudos.
Go ahead, Gladys. Go ahead.
I want to give kudos to Brenna and the team. I I was there doing voter, you know, personal voting and it was very smooth. For those who are watching um and 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 want to trust the process, this is the best, I think, to go in there and probably not wait till the rush. And um it was very smooth pr- transition, great team, very nice um process of of those who are concerned about the COVID or the uh transmission at all. So I I recommend it. So thanks a lot for the work you're doing there.
Thank you. And and one more thing too, just speaking of the post office. Um there, I I believe he's a new postmaster, um Carlos Serino. He has been, I've never had this line of communication with somebody at the post office in my whole time being the clerk as well. Um he reached out to me um early in the election season. He came to City Hall. We had just like a meet, a meet and greet in the back parking lot, introduced ourselves to each other. Um he gave me his cell phone, his email um as as well as his assistant, and I've reached out to him a few times. One of our requests is sometimes we don't get our mail until closer to noon, and we've reached out and asked us to be the first stop, if that was possible, just so we could begin processing new applications. And we we've gotten four trays full of ballots back in the mail, and those are very time-consuming um processing them. So they've been really great. The post office has been really great getting us the mail first thing in the morning so we can get a jumpstart on it. So um I've been really, really pleased with our direct line of communication with the post office as well.
Council Graney, then Council Hernandez.
Yeah, uh just if I could ask uh the the city clerk, would it be possible for us to receive uh the total number of mail-in ballots that you sent and the total number of ballots that you receive back so that we can get a percentage when it's over?
Sure. Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Council Hernandez?
Yes, I um, I just want to, um and if I can, through the through the president, um to our uh our clerk, I wanted to touch on that there was questions from the community as to the safety um on the day of voting, if they were going to go, especially the elderly people um on the day of the election. And I know and I want to praise the tremendous um work that our city and the clerk's office already did um for our primary um voting. Um but now that we're in a red zone, what are the measures that the city is taking that we can bring back that message to our constituents that the city clerk's office and the city airport is taking? Um as it relates to the COVID nineteen pandemic?
So that's a great question, and the state has been um sending us tons of um supplies to make sure we are running elections to the safest standards that we possibly can. Um we, they've sent us, um I think we've received fifty to seventy-five now of the plastic guards that we're going to have up. Um the big plastic barriers in front of our poll workers um to protect them. We're going to have um plenty of hand sanitizer, sanitizing wipe, sanitizing spray. Everyone will have masks on, um gloves. We've been provided all of that from the state. And then I just received that grant that the city council voted on on a couple of weeks ago. Um so we were able to buy some extra stuff um for polling locations as well. The last couple of elections, we just were using blue tape on the floor, um just because that's what we had and things can be quite expensive. But this time, we were able to order a little bit more lo- professional-looking decals for the floor um that should be coming in any time now that are going to be like big red circles, so people will know that this is where they need to stop um just to keep socially distanced. And we're also going to be asking the police officers, just because this is a presidential election, and I don't anticipate any sort of lines that we see on some of these news stations. But, you know, there, people can expect to wait maybe ten, fifteen minutes if it is one of our busier polling locations. And we're going to be asking the Hoyoke Police Department, I've spoken to Captain Pratt a couple of times already, um to just help us with crowd flow. And if there's more than a handful of people waiting in line at a checkout, to the check-in table or waiting for um, you know, a booth to open up and to be sanitized, we're going to have the police um help us keep some of those people outside um of the building, just just to prevent all the crowding inside the building. So um we've, yeah, we 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 have a lot. We have a lot of P P E. We have a lot of, um we have gotten tons of new poll workers, so we're going to be able to utilize some of them to help us with the sanitizing of the booths, um you know, hopefully in between each poll worker, I mean, in between each voter. But we also have to be careful doing that, that we don't get these voting booths so wet that it damages the ballots as well. So we need to be cautious with that as well, so.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Council Bacon?
Oh, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay.
But I do want to thank you, Brenna, particularly for the posting that you're putting up on the website. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm being, I'm being asked, I'm being asked a question. I'm going to ask the question. They're asking me um that the ballots that you're receiving, they're being checked off from the list if you would have been there in person. You know how you go and they check off your name and then you go to the second person and it gets checked off? So that's what you guys are doing, basically taking the ballots and crossing it off like this person already voted and all? And that's how you.
Right, so the, so you you voted in person, so you saw that you were checked into the electronic poll pad. So basically, that information is uploaded um into our state computer by the barcode that that's printed out um for each individual voter. And so on Election Day, when someone were to go into their polling location to vote, if they voted in person or through the mail, they're going to already be checked off the voting list, so that way, you know, they obviously can't vote again. And the same thing with um voting in person. If someone came into City Hall and voted in person, well, actually, I'll give you a different example, which we've been seeing a lot. We've mailed someone a ballot and then they decide they don't want to vote through the mail anymore. They want to come into City Hall and vote in person. So they don't have to, they're not required to bring the ballot they received in the mail. But what we do is the state, the system flags it when we go to put them in that they voted in person. So we have to go in and reject their first ballot that they received through the mail and the date that we were rejecting it. And then we um put in there that they voted in person and then the date that they voted in person. So the system will only allow you to accept one ballot per person.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question? Yeah, okay.
Sir Leahy? Uh, it was an interesting question. Um uh so the reason I, um first of all, Brenna, thank you, thank you uh and your team. Um this is the reason why I wanted to um um have Todd call a special meeting if needed. I know how much work that uh running, I've been around for a lot of elections. Uh there's a lot of work that goes on, uh you know, leading up to election that day and uh days after election. That's why I didn't think it was um, I didn't think it was that big of a deal not to have election or not to have a city council meeting if we had any sort of uh information or if we had a vote on something that uh council president could have called a meeting. So I just want to let you know that, Brenna, that's why I was fighting so hard not to do it that night. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh is there any other updates that I might have missed or someone got an email for something? So Council Lisi?
Thank you. Um I might um defer to Council Leahy on this. Um but we a- as the uh Public Service Committee had a meeting last night where we had some technical difficulties, so we rescheduled for next Monday. Um and this is to fill the administrative assistant position to the city council. And so one of the things that we were wondering in that committee last night was whether um due to the urgency to to fill uh Ryan's seat, if um there was any appetite to call a special meeting for that Monday and um have the Public Service Committee um sort of conduct the interviews and then um do a vote right away.
Rebecca, if I if I could, uh Todd.
Council Leahy.
Yeah, it's something we Todd discussed, Rebecca, and I was just going to bring it up in a couple minutes. Um uh I don't think that we should call a special meeting that night for Monday. I think that um I think it's only fair to give the applicants time to call their city councilors, to call um uh any people that have any questions. A lot of times, a lot of questions come up from from them and they want to call me or they want to call you or they want to call out somebody else. So I think um I was texting with Todd today that uh we should um have it a different night. Plus, I think there's going to be a lot more people applying for this position now or putting a letter of interest in, in the cover letter, that sort of thing. So once again, um I do apologize to all the people that were on the meeting last night. Uh we did have some issues with Hoyoke Media where they couldn't stream. I spoke with Ryan today. Uh they had uh a school committee meeting going at the same time. Somehow um Hoyoke Media couldn't get on to our meeting at the same time. Um so some issues arose. We're about an hour and fifteen minutes or so onto the Zoom call with uh to no avail. We asked guidance from uh Crystal and Crystal um through speakerphone. I I want to say thank you. And I think we did the right thing. We should give it forty-eight hours so everybody can see the meeting and hear the meeting. So um that's what we're going to do. Next Monday night, uh six o'clock, um we're going to have the interviews. And there's still time to get your uh cover letters or resumes in if you'd like to be considered. Thank you.
Council McGivern, you had a question or that gone now or?
Uh it wasn't a question, Mr. President. I I just don't want it into into debate under the president's report because that would be a violation of the open meeting law.
No debates.
True enough.
Now, that was just an, I then I thank you for bringing it up. We did try to have the um interviews last night, but there was a a glitch. Um things happen, so it's good to shut it down and we'll repost it. And then I I do know, leading up to it, we had twenty-eight applicants. Uh it dropped down to four, now it jumped up to six. I can see it jumping up again uh a a few more. Um so having an extra week uh might bring in some more applicants and then we can vet the process uh more accordingly. So with that, that's the end of the report. Onto committees, ordinance report, uh thirteen A. More accordingly. So with that, that's the end of the report. Onto committees ordinance report, uh, thirteen A. Uh, committee on ordinance was referred in order that the city grants, uh, resident parking for three forty Hampton Street. Recommended that the order has been complied with.
Uh, motion to, uh, receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt under discussion. Counselor Lacy?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll make it very brief here. Uh, so. There is a request for resident parking only at three forty Hampton Street. Um, and it seems there, it seems to be a pressing need, uh, because, uh. Of the applicant's condition at the moment, but it may be a more long-term need. Um, however, there is a, um. Full, fully formalized process, um, that we passed via ordinance that requires a petition and, and several steps. And so we're just not there yet if the, um, request is for, um, this resident only parking by permit. And, um, Council LeBron Martinez was at the meeting with the applicant and so all the details for how to proceed were flushed out. Um, and once we receive that petition, we could start the formal process anew. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, motion is that it's to receive and adopt that's complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed?
No.
No.
Thighs would have it. Thirteen B, the committee on ordinance was referred in order that the city of Hoyok accept Old Bassett Road as a public way. Recommended that the order has been complied with and that has been referred to DPW.
Uh, motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt that's been complied with and referred to DPW under discussion. Counselor Lacy?
Uh, thank you. So, um, this was filed by Counsel Bartley who may, uh, want to say more. However, um. Again, here there is a more formalized process. So we began a discussion as to, um. You know, what some of the resident concerns were in that area and, um, it seems that. Old Passit Road is, is, is not a public way at the moment. There were a number of questions that were raised. Um, that we hope to get answers from legal in terms of the, the status of, of the road. However, um, it seems that the city ha, you know, the genie, it, you know, has lights up there. It seems that the city is taking care of trash pickup, recycling pickup, um. And even plowing the road. It's just, it's an unpaved road at the moment and. We're also trying to, um, understand whether or not if the city accepts this, um. Private way. I'm only calling it private way at the moment because it's not a hundred percent clear what the status of this, um, road is. Um, so I'm calling it private way for now. Um, so if the city does adopt the private way, is it our responsibility to pave it? And vice versa. If we don't accept it as a, a, a pu- a public light way, um, can we continue? Can we pave it and dedicate some chapter ninety funds to it? Um, the engineer made some comments about, um, the expense of paving and maintaining that segment of the road. Um, but at the end of the day, there's a more formal process that needs to be followed here. Um, a handful of questions such as what I mentioned, um, have been forwarded to legal. Um, and I, I think we will have some of those answers back shortly. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, we, we, uh. We, we, we took up in committee, uh, it's, uh, the, r- r- right after we, uh, vote in this order, Mr. President, I just wanna. There, there's a late file that, uh, that was for, for the petition. Can we just take that up right immediately thereafter? And then we'll, we'll just dis- discuss it there if I, if I may. I don't know what letter it is.
Hold on, give me a s- one second. Alright, so it's late file A.
So I, I, I would just assume, just let's, let's vote on this and then if you can immediately take up the, uh, the late file and, um. Then we'll, we'll flush it out and we'll refer that along.
Alright, so before that, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, and I, I wanna, uh, I, I know we're saying we're referring this to Department of Public Works. I just wanna make sure we're. Referring it to them specifically to see what they can do to make the roadway. Uh, safer for the winter months. You got three, as I understand it, three elderly women that are living on the street. The street's in deplorable condition. They're concerned about their own personal safety getting in and out of the street. Let's at least make sure the DPW goes up there to see what they can do. We don't, I, I'm not expecting they're gonna pave it. But can they make it so that it's more passable with, with less, uh, significant potholes? And I wanna make sure that we're not just sending it to them saying, well, it's gonna be a pu- a petition for a public way. Because by the time all that happens, we're gonna be in winter and we need to get something done for those, uh, ladies that are taxpayers. Uh, right now so that they can feel safe driving during the winter. Thank you.
Alright, so currently before us is thirteen B, which was to receive and adopt that's been complied with. And refer to DPW, uh, Department of Public Works. All those in favor?
Well, can we amend that?
You wanna amend it? Okay, so, so hold on. So what, what would you like me to add, Counselor?
I'd like to add it so that we refer to Department of Public Works with the, uh. Recommendation that they inspect the first, the street right now and see what they can do to make it safer for the winter months.
Alright, so the amendment is. That we refer to Public Works for the recommendation that they inspect the street and fix it for the wi- winter months. That's efficient?
Yep.
You're second to that amendment? So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's what the amendment. Now it's receive, adopt, comply with, refer to DPW with that amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's gone. Now motion from Counselor Bartley is to proceed out of order to take up late file A, which is a petition.
Second.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So late file A is we, the underside residents of Old Bassett Road, Hoyok Mass pursuant to Hoyok Code of Ordinance, Chapter two, Section seventy-eight dash eighty-one. Do hereby request that the Board of Public Works and the City Council for the City of Hoyok establish Old Bassett Road as a public way. And then it's signed off by three people. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, a motion to receive and to refer to Board of Public Works, uh, I guess, I, I don't think it's a suspend our rules. I don't think, because we're taking final action, so. We don't want to suspend our rules. Uh, motion to receive and refer to the Board of Public Works and sets to have them set up for a public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Motion is receive, refer to Board of Public.
Under discussion, if I may, very briefly, uh, we, we had a, uh, Mr. Parent came in to ordinance, did, did a great job, uh, gave us some guidance, especially me. Uh, relative to this, it's, it's hard to know all the ordinances, but, but what we did and, uh, by, by having to take it up so quickly. And I appreciate that from the ordinance chair is, is that we, what we got it before the public and I got the appropriate guidance that I needed to, uh. Uh, to get to this point. So what I did, you can tell I, I handwrote that and, and I, I gave it to the, um. Uh, because nothing in our ordinance to say specifically what kind of petition we need. And we had that in discussion, but, but that looks like it'll be close enough and, uh, that'll give them, uh, 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 allow them to put the ball on the tee. And to, uh, have a, uh, have the, uh, public hearing set up in, um, at the Board of Public Works. And so what the Board of Public Works will do is they'll, they'll recommend and it's basically up to the city council as to whether or not to a- accept the city street. I, I think in, in this case, Mr. Mr. President, we, you know, the memo from the city engineer. It, it was really on point. It, it, I think it might've gone a, a bridge too far, um, in, in, in the, in the sense that the, the city would be on the hook for. Repaving the whole road and he put a price on there, three hundred thousand dollars and I'm not disputing that. Um, I think what I am, where I did dispute that night and I'm disputing now and I'll dispute when it comes up before us, again, is that, is that. W- while yes, uh, if that's the price three hundred thousand dollars to, to regrade that road, fine, but what, what the. Constituents are looking for at the top of that hill is, is, as Counselor Murphy rightly pointed out, is just a safe passageway. Um, at, at, at the low point and, and so they're not looking for a total regrade. And, and we've had discussions before, Mr. President, if you remember, where we accepted other streets, particularly Liberty. A- and, you know, it wasn't like we had to immediately turn around and resurface it. So I, I'm not sure where the city engineer was going with that. Um, but, but gen- generally the, the rest of his memo was really, really helpful. And I, and I wanna, uh, thank him and then we'll just send this to Public Works. We'll let them set the public hearing. And then they will refer it back to us after they take a vote and then we as city council make the final call. On whether or not that's a public way. Thank you.
Counselor Lacy?
Oh, um, uh, I, I wanted to make a comment just before we, uh, move on from. The, this issue and ordinance altogether. So before you take up the finance committee orders, I have my hand up for, for them.
Alright, so now for this one. Okay, so this is motion is to receive, refer to Public Works for their hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Going back?
No, now I wanna.
Okay, so Counselor Lacy?
Uh, thanks. Um, so I want to just note that the ordinance committee has, as far as I understand, dealt with, um. All the traffic orders that we've had before. There, there may be just like one or two outstanding. Um, what we have, what we're inundated with at the moment are really zone change requests and, uh, marijuana special permits. Um, as well as a handful of other mari- marijuana related changes to the, um, ordinance. That I, I think there's like, um, seven or eight of, of those orders. These are all issues that need, um, public hearings and that also relate to the planning board and so. It's, it's been challenging trying to find time where we can, um, do the joint hearings with the planning board and. Um, given our schedules, uh, I, I may wind up taking a couple of things up individually or separately from, um, the planning board. Um. It, just to help us move forward, um, on, on what's in the jacket as opposed to, um. Ha- having very small, uh, agendas. And so I just wanted to give folks a heads up about that and if you have any. Um, issues that you, you believe are in the jacket that haven't gotten attention, um, please flag them for me.
Thank you. So off to finance fourteen A, committee on finances referred in order in accordance with Mass. Uh, General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. The city council hereby accept the provisions of the IMLS CARES Act grant.
Motion to receive to pass the first reading and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, finance committee had Maria Pagano before us. Uh, she gave us a in-depth, uh. Overview of this particular grant and what the library is doing. Uh, first of all, the grant is for three thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. There is no match by the city. It's used for what, what she called general, in general, is virtual programming. Which means that these are services that the library have provided and especially in the, uh, midst of the, of the pandemic. Are, are trying to make it sure that with the library being closed, that there are services for people to utilize. More and more, the library has gone online. She is enhancing those type of services. There are curb side services for pickup of things that you can check out. Uh, there are a number of different things that, that they do on a regular basis. Um, she assured us that this, uh, grant would supplement, uh, not just the city budget. But also money that the friends of the library put into these efforts to make sure that there's enough financial resources for the library to continue to do this. Um, I think with the staff she has, with the volunteers she has, she's doing a tremendous job. The finance committee recommends that we adopt the, uh, the receiving and the appropriation of this grant for her use at the library.
Anyone further? So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant fourteen A.
Good to have you back, Counselor Tomlin.
Good to be back.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grayney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez? LeBron Martinez?
I, I'm sorry, I say yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon? Bacon?
She's on mute.
Oh.
There you go.
Read my lips.
I know, I was reading your lips. Thank you. Unanimous vote.
We approve the grant fourteen B, committee on finances referred in order that in accordance with Master Law forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the council hereby accept the JAG grant.
Motion to receive, pass the first reading to adopt.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had Sergeant Hart with us. Uh, as usual, Sergeant Hart did a fantastic overview of this grant. Known as the, the Burn Memorial Justice Grant. We refer to it often as, as the police department as the JAG grant itself. It comes from the Justice Department, kind of an annual grant that's used for purchasing of equipment. Uh, Sergeant Hart tells us that this, this year's, uh, grant is down a little bit in terms of dollars, but it's still. Thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. There is no match by the city. The, uh, the department has earmarked the purchasing of. What they're, they're called, uh, bulletproof rifle grade, bulletproof, uh, shields. Uh, these are things that you would see out in the field that would be for use if there was some type of a, a. A drug task force raid or some type of a incident where they had to go in. And it was something that, you know, the lead officers would use to protect themselves as they were entering into a, a building or entering into a, uh. An area where it was necessary. They also have, uh, earmarked that they're gonna purchase twenty-four, uh, computer tops, uh, uh, personal computers. They have approximately a hundred within the department it- itself. Those things are used twenty-four, seven. And just like the cruisers, they like to keep these things going so that they can, uh, you know, make sure that they have enough of them. They, uh, did not go out to bid because they were allowed to do that through Wally Computer. And the committee recommends that we accept the provisions of the grant and allow the police department to spend it.
Any questions from anyone? Seeing none, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the JAG grant. Remember, if you're on mute, to unmute to do the.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grayney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you approve that grant fourteen C?
The president, if I could suspend the rules and take up fourteen C, fourteen E and fourteen F. Fourteen F would be a separate bulk where it goes with these two transfers.
Okay, so motion is suspend rules, take up fourteen C, E and F as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? For fourteen C, the committee on finances for an order there be appropriated from transfer thirteen thousand. Six hundred and seventy-five dollars as follows and there's a breakdown of all the places it's gonna go. E is committee on finances for an order that they hereby be appropriated from transfer fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. From parking control officer, park, uh, maintenance man to all the other, uh, listed items. And F is the committee on finances referred, uh, settlement agreement between the city of Hoyok and the UFCW. Local fourteen fifty-nine DPW unit recommended that the settlement agreement be received.
Take a motion to, to pass the first reading on fourteen, uh, C and fourteen E.
The motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading for C and E, uh, Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a quick reminder, I'll do a brief overview, but we're, we're prepared to answer any questions. Uh, we, this is the ongoing, um, saga with the DPW, uh, contract itself. And MOA that would bring an increase in salary and a number of other economic impacts to the contract for the. Mostly for the DPW laborers union itself. The increase is, is the equivalent of one and a half percent per year. This contract, I'll remind everybody, was signed in August of this fiscal year, this calendar year. Therefore, it's, it's, although it goes back to fiscal year twenty, for which, uh, the, the negotiations actually took place. It was negotiated, uh, as always, the mayor's representative, who was one of the attorneys who is no longer with us. At the first meeting, we had, uh, Crystal Barnes with us representing the law department. And we've had some communication with the, uh, with the labor, you, with the labor attorney, but the labor attorney again did not have anything to go with. And we've had some communication with the with the labor attorney, but the labor attorney again did not have anything to go with negotiations, but was available to answer questions. The contract itself, we deemed we thought it was fair at the first meeting. There are some title changes that will give the superintendent some ability to flex and be able to pay some extra money. One of those is if a if a DPW laborer upgrades their CDL license to a class A so that they can, which means it's a weight. Counselor Sullivan does a much better job of explaining this, but it's it's when you when you're driving something that goes dump truck or something that a dump truck is towing, it is something that you need more than just a CDL license. All our laborers are hired with CDL license, but this is a step up. They would get during those hours an additional seventy-five seventy-five cents per hour. There's some negotiation that benefit the city that allows temporary help to be used when we have injured on duty people and some other additional, they call it IRB, and some other additional language that allows the flexibility of the superintendent to be able to replace those people with the temporary. Now, at the first meeting, two things happened. We did not have a union representative. And we had a number of, which I'll go into in a minute after we adopt these, we had a number of transfers that we, when we added them up, wasn't making sense to us, even though Mike McManix explained to us most important that where the money is coming from is each of those line items is a surplus at this time, most of them because of a vacancy. He's had a number of people that have resigned and moved on to other jobs. And some of them because the surplus was created for because under the COVID situation, that money that just wasn't spent. So he assured us that the money is coming from a surplus. And it gave us reasonable explanation as to why there were surpluses this early in the fiscal year. He also explained, I'm sorry, the auditor was also with us, and explained the the transfers themselves is complementing a retro pay that would be for fiscal twenty. Again, the contract was negotiated in fiscal twenty-one. Therefore, we're allowed to do that from what we've been told. And the total amount of money that is due for, there's a second retro, which is this current year fiscal twenty-one. In fiscal twenty-one, the superintendent, as I think many counselors have asked over the years, was able to budget for what was anticipated to be these increases in his budget. And that was explained to us during the budget hearings. But one of the things that he did not calculate was overtime use. And there was more overtime use than usual because of the vacancies. And therefore, the retro for fiscal year twenty-one, which is thirteen thousand, five thirty-six, ninety-seven, is is just to increase the overtime because of what 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 is taking place so far this year. The committee originally recommended to adopt the contract, but we wanted to hear from the union. So we had a second round of a discussion. At the last finance committee meeting, we had the local representative of the union, who's an employee of the DPW Tyrone Housing, who came in. And we also had a representative from the regional union itself, Dean. I forget Dean's name, last name. I'm not sure if it was Harvey, but they both were there to answer questions, both reiterated that they are happy with the contract. Their employees are looking forward to this increase and looking forward to their their retro pay. In a nutshell, what we have before us are two transfers that would cover the appropriations, essentially cover the retro for last year, and would cover the additional retro for this year. These transfers total twenty-nine thousand and I think it's three hundred and forty-seven dollars. By adopting the appropriations, we would ratify the contract because we would approve of the appropriation transfers. The contract has been signed by the mayor, has been signed by the union. And the superintendent, you know, is happy with the transfers to get the men and women of the DPW a much deserved increase.
Counselor Murphy?
And just two questions. And I'm certainly not against the contract. And I do appreciate the work that these people do for the DPW and for us. But one thing on the first transfer on fourteen C where it says highway LODR. I could not find a highway LODR in our budget nor a line item. So can somebody give me what the number for that is so I can record it properly?
I think it's load operation or load mechanic.
Load, load operation.
Please, so Michael Sullivan can probably tell you more.
Mike?
I don't know. I don't know the specific line items, so.
Okay.
We can get that to you. I can have time to tell you what line item it is tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. And then on the second transfer on fourteen E, my only concern, and I don't know why it is, but was the transfer to item five one one zero four refuse HMO recycler, which obviously is a significant sum out of this. It's the only one that was out of whack. It's nine percent increase in the budget as everything else is about one and a half to two percent. But is there a rationale for that one? It's on the fourteen E?
Yeah, so.
I'm checking my notes, Counselor Murphy.
Okay. And I'm sorry I didn't make that meeting because I was at another.
No, no, it's a good question. And we did discuss it. You just got to get to a fair answer, correct the answer, of course. I know Mike McMahon has talked about what's going on with recycling at more than one meeting, and this ties into it, what what's happening because of the fact that everything is changing with recycling because China is no longer accepting plastics. But there are different places that are opening up in the United States that should, he was anticipating a much bigger problem with recycling. And I'm sorry, but I can't give you much more than that, that it.
Joe, I don't think we discussed it at the last meeting.
What's that?
I don't think we discussed it at the last meeting.
No, at the first meeting we did.
Okay, yeah.
And I appreciate, but I believe it just ties in with everything that's going on with recycling. And one question we did ask him if this helps is with all these transfers, because usually we're doing this with free cash, which we're not sure what's going to happen. The state only recently finalized the budget, so we're still waiting to hear what's going to happen with the monies that are coming our way and what our final budget is going to look like. And we have no idea when that's going to happen. So Mike did not want these people to go without the raise much, you know, much longer, which I agree with them. I asked him if any of these transfers would need money transferred into them later down the road. And he said, you know, with all honesty, he carefully selected money to transfer out that. And at this point in time, he says he will not need money to be transferred back in for any of these items.
Well, thank you. Again, I just it just seems that one is the only one that's out of whack.
Yep. Counselor Lee?
Yes, thank you. My biggest concerns for the evening were making sure the people, I truly believe that the Department of Public Works, there have been women are unsung heroes of our community. They're the ones that kind of fly right the radar, but they're the ones that do all the heavy lifting. And they do a lot of heavy lifting. So my concern was making sure that they are getting paid when they got their CDLs. And Mike McMahon did follow up with an email to me saying that when they hire people, they do they they come in with their CDL already most of the time. And one of the bumps in pay they get is when they have to utilize that, they get, I believe it's a seventy-five some difference. And what I said, and I'll say it again on record, I think that if they do have a CDL, it's part of their job that they should get the seventy-five cent added raise. I believe when you become a paramedic in the fire department, it bumps your salary up. So I think any sort of professional development, any licensure that you have only makes you makes your skill level that much higher. And I, you know, I basically told the union people that they should throw more spaghetti at the wall and see what sticks. Because these guys are the unsung heroes. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Grainey?
Yeah, I'd like to move to ratify the contract.
Second. Alright, so on the vote right now, it's the pass the first reading for fourteen C and fourteen E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading for fourteen C and E. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for both.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Absolutely.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. President, if I could on fourteen F, just that we receive it and keep a copy in the archives of finance.
Second. Second. So fourteen F, that's the one that the community finances were referred. The settlement agreement between the union and the city that it be received. So motion is to receive and put in the archives for the future. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I can make a motion to suspend the rules to take up items fourteen fourteen D, fourteen H, and fourteen J together.
Second.
Request of the auditor to return these items to the to the auditor, to return them to the mayor, because we just we replaced these items because they were out of whack after the original meeting.
Alright, so fourteen D, H, and J. Fourteen D is referred that they hereby be appropriated twenty-one thousand, two forty-three and inappropriate to different areas. Fourteen H at the command finance transfer five thousand, twenty-seven dollars to the following areas. And then the command finances referred a transfer of twenty-one thousand, two eighty-two to other areas. That's J. So these are all to go back to the auditor.
Back to the auditor, which means we're returning them to the mayor.
So motions that they return back to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Brings us back to fourteen G. Command finances referred communication from the Hoyoke Community Preservation Act. Request that the city council approve fiscal year twenty-one CPAC budget article. I recommend it's been complied with.
President, if I could also ask that we take up item twenty-two at the same time filed by Counselor Sullivan.
Item twenty-two, hold on a second. So suspend the rules, take up with fourteen G, item twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For item twenty-two is that from Counselor Sullivan or at the city council, approve the fiscal year twenty-one Community Preservation Act budget per article eighteen as follows. Appropriation admin expenses thirty thousand. Historic sixty thousand, housing sixty thousand, open space sixty thousand, reserves three hundred and ninety thousand, supplemental fifty-nine thousand, one fifty-five for fiscal year twenty. Total fiscal year twenty-one request, six hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. So under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
If I could on the committee report, we're asking that it be complied with what we had received and what we acted on and discussed in committee was a communication from Amy Landau, is that it, Mike?
Landau, Amy Landau.
Thank you. And you know, essentially, this is an annual vote that we take. It's similar to the city budget process itself. It projects revenues that's coming in through the the incentive that comes from the cable, I'm sorry, comes from CPA itself. These monies have to be categorized to a certain degree. And Counselor Sullivan was, of course, with us at the finance committee and went into a deep discussion about this. I had suggested and both the auditor and I believe our city solicitor agreed with me that we could not take a final vote on the communication that we needed, Mike, as our liaison to the CPA, which I think immensely because he's very knowledgeable and up to date on what goes on in that committee. And I think that, you know, we've done this, this will be our third time under Counselor Sullivan's name, an order that comes in that says we agree with the CPA in percentages of how the money is going to be spent and the estimated revenue, which is exactly what we do with the cherry sheet at the beginning of the city budget cycle. The good and probably more important news is that, as you all know, once the CPA votes on the project, we have the final say on all projects. So with the exception of the administrative class, right now, we have the final say on every project that goes through them. So if I could, Mr. President, I think just that the committee reports complied with, but perhaps turn over Counselor Sullivan's order to let him walk us through that.
Alright, so for fourteen G, it's the receive adopt that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? To twenty-two, this is an order from, once again, from Counselor Sullivan, that the city council approve the fiscal year Community Preservation Act budget. Counselor Sullivan?
So just just so everybody's clear on this, this is a budget projection. It's required by the state under the Community Preservation Act that we take a vote on this. It's not for, it is not for any particular project. What we're what we're doing is we're putting thirty thousand dollars into the administrative budget. This is to keep on paying Amy Landau and any outside consultants and stuff like that as the year progresses. The other monies is the percentage that is required to be placed into each account as a minimum. So as you can see, sixty thousand has to go into historic, sixty thousand to historic, and sixty thousand reserved in open space. That does not mean the money even has to be spent. If it isn't spent, it'll roll over till the next year. If it isn't spent that year, it'll roll over to the next year again. This is just to assure that certain amounts and rest, what's that's is in the open reserves, which can go into any one of those three accounts above as the projects come forward. The the total amount of the budget for fiscal twenty-one is six hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars.
Any questions for Counselor Sullivan?
Mr. President, I got a quick question.
Sure.
Counselor Sullivan, how much is the state reimbursing us? I know when this Community Preservation Act was passed, the state was supposed to give us are we getting reimbursements from the state?
We are getting reimbursements. Not, they are not a very big number, I believe.
Weren't they supposed to give us some money, match us, match some money with us?
The word match is not much of a match. It's a percentage of what we put in through the through the deeds process. So.
Right. Are we getting, are we getting that payment from the state?
Say that again?
Are we getting that payment from the state?
Yes, we are. But it's, I believe this year, the state match is fourteen percent. Alright, so how that, you know, it's still beyond me how that's defined as a match, but that's what it is.
Well, whatever it is, as long as they're paying, ponying up what they're supposed to give us.
Yes, they are. And for every other town that has signed on to it also, everybody is getting it. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, I want to thank Counselor Sullivan for all the work he does. He always volunteers to be on this committee and help them out. And it's greatly appreciated on our side because every time you come with the projects, you give us all the details to it. And it's greatly, greatly appreciated what you're doing with this committee. So thank you. This would be an order that we approve of the the breakdown for the budget as described by Counselor Sullivan. Do you want a roll call for this, Mike?
I don't know if that's.
Yeah, let's do a roll call because it's financial. So just so we cover ourselves. So. When in doubt, do a roll call. So the clerk will call roll if you're voting, yes, you're voting for the budget as it is laid out.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan? Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved the budget. Where you vote, you approve the budget. Uh, fourteen I? Fourteen I, the committee on finance has referred uh request of transfer of twelve thousand five fourteen into the looks like, let's see, for, from refuse H M E O. Um, and from parking control officer. Two other areas, uh, recommended that be given leave to a draw.
Yes, uh, same thing, I, I, I think I skipped, uh.
Good time, yeah.
Yeah. We'll just return to the auditor, return to the mayor.
So this one's just being returned, so uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that goes back to the auditor. That brings us to public service. I know we didn't have that meeting that would be taken on Monday at six or six-thirty, Jim?
No, yeah, so I was gonna wait till that, but um, yeah, so we tried having the meeting last night, but because of I T issues, uh, we couldn't have it, so uh, it's gonna be at six o'clock. It's coming Monday and um, we're gonna try to fit everybody in for every twenty minutes or so.
Thank you very much, Counselor Leahy, for, for doing this. I know there was a little mishap, but I truly appreciate you.
It happens.
Stand this underway.
No worries.
Um, so there will be no action on that because it didn't come out of committee yet. Uh, there is no D G N R, there's no charter and rules, there's no joint committee. So on to motions, orders, and resolutions. First one is twenty, it's from Counselor Sullivan. Uh, order that pursuant to master and allow chapter twenty-two M, the city council approves a resolution authorizing the city of Hoyok to participate in the Massachusetts commercials property assessed clean energy program or PACE. Want to send to D G N R? Counselor Sullivan?
Correct.
Motion is to receive and send to D G N R?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-one is from Counselor Sullivan, or that the city council approve funding of eighteen thousand in CPA funding for small, small grant programs. This will allow for up to six or more small grants, none to exceed three thousand. Send to finance.
You see the send to finance?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-two is already done. Twenty-three is from Counselor Bacon, that the area marked on Ernst Lane with cones and the barrels for three years be repaired before winter. Uh, this would be receive, refer to D P W and Suez.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-four from Counselor Bacon, that the D P W engineer evaluate Upland Street and recommend the replacement of no parking signs at the crest of the hill to improve safety due to the line of sight limitations on the street. That'd be referred to ordinance.
Second.
Ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-five is from Counselor Bacon, that the D P W repair homestead Ave, south between Arden Street and Edbridge Road.
Receive adopt and refer to W, please.
So that is receive, uh, uh, Counselor Graney?
I'd like to be added to this order because I spoke to the residents up there on this issue. And I also spoke to uh McMahon, McManus on this issue, and he said the next time out there, we're gonna take care of it.
Alright, so motion is to receive, adopt, send to D P W, adding Counselor Graney.
And please add my name too.
And Counselor Bartley?
It's a great order.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Twenty-six is from Counselor Hernandez, that the handicap sign be placed in front of two fifty-four Walnut Street.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Twenty-seven from Counselor Hernandez. Sixteen dash twenty-six Linden Street, other way, which abuts uh with Avery Field and parking lot of a law firm on Hampden and Linden Street. Some need cleanup, trimming and overgrown vines. I have attached some of the images. So motion would be receive, adopt, and send to D P W for cleanup?
Yes.
Counselor Hernandez?
Do you know the, I, I can't remember the law firm that's right on the corner was where um maybe Reston Peace Marty Dunn belonged to.
It's uh, it's Attorney Sean Allen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Allen involved, yeah.
So I was gonna reach out to them, I just haven't had the time to um to see if they can do their part and take care of their area that their ownership of, and then have D P W um trim the side that's on the Avery Field that, that belongs to the city.
Alright, so motion is receive, adopt, and send to D P W. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? From Counselor Hernandez, property owners for two eighty-seven to two ninety-one uh Elma Street. Uh, have reached out to possibly collaborate with the city, H P D, and other landlords on s- uh that own two ninety-four, two ninety-eight Elm Street and the building on Walnut Street at three hundred Walnut Street in the pursuit of installation of surveillance, an attempt to combat the criminal activity. Uh, would you like to send this to public safety, or what would you like to do with this?
Yes, send to public safety, please.
Alright, so motion would be receive, refer to public safety, sending to the police department. And send a, a copy to the police department uh in the mayor's office.
Yes. And it's not the owner of three hundred Walnut Street, it's the buildings that are adjacent to three hundred Walnut Street, which is um, I, I think it's like three oh eight, three oh nine Walnut. And that, he's the same owner, Tony Vis- Vasoni. He's the owner of two ninety-four, two ninety-eight M Street, and they all wanna collaborate on putting funds to install cameras to do surveillance in that area. Which is very drug infested and, you know, all kinds of trafficking take place, so. Yeah, just wanted to clarify that.
Right, Counselor Tallman?
Yeah, if the maker of order, could I be added on to that order, Libby?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Adding Counselor Tallman? Alright, so receive adopt, or receive, refer to public safety, copy to H P D and the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-nine from Counselor Hernandez. Four emails sent from a constituent regarding and supporting having access to secure and healthy foods uh for the hands in the backyard, was that the communication that we got?
Yeah.
So that.
Was taken care of.
So that.
Right?
Yeah, that was sent to, that was sent to ordinance.
Yes.
So this, when I say twenty-nine is being complied with?
Yeah.
Alright, so twenty-nine is complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
President, can we suspend the rules to take item thirty and thirty-one as a package and adopt?
No. Just kidding, yeah.
Okay.
Thirty, thirty-one, suspend the rules, take as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty is that uh, order that we hereby appropriate eleven thousand two seventeen seventy-four cents, which would be some sergeants and patrolmen too injured on duty. Thirty-one is that we appropriate and transfer sixteen thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents from firefighters and tenants to injured on duty. So motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is our probably every meeting vote to uh, just to move money out of salary line items temporarily in most cases into injured on duty line items for accounting purposes. Uh, this uh type of vote is required because of that micromanaging ordinance that we adopted some years ago and amended, uh, or trying to amend uh earlier this evening. But it, I think it's important just to know that we do this for good reasons, and even though we do it every uh, every meeting, it's important to do.
Alright, so motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfers, thirty and thirty-one.
Can we just get the numbers, Mr. President?
Yep, so for the thirty, which is the police, that is two. For fire, which is thirty-one, that's three.
Thanks.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Mi- um, Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We've only approved thirty, thirty-one.
Nothing else on the agenda, Mr. President, to make a motion, will you adjourn?
That is incorrect because there are some late files, which we already took one up, so we're already into it. B uh, is property tax bureau information guidelines released oh two dash two oh eight, September two thousand and two? Will we send that to finance?
What's the emergency?
I have no clue.
So.
To finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? C is the settlement agreement and bylaws between the city of Hoyok and the local fourteen fifty-nine. Is that what we already just did?
I believe we've had that, I'm not too sure why it came back in, I think it was just to make sure we had a copy of it because it's been an ongoing discussion. But we, we received that before our first meeting.
Yeah, I remember an email from Tanya, maybe she was just trying to make sure we had it.
I think we may have had an M O A, and I think someone may have wanted the entire contract, but we did have it.
Alright, so just refer that to finance in case it's.
For the archives.
For the archives.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D is a late file order from Counselor Bartley that the order, uh, the honorable city council, according to master and law chapter thirty B, um and the procurement ordinance vote to accept the offer of the Bay State Health uh healthcare partnership purchase of the land of the building located at four forty-five Lower West Coast Row, which would be the geriatric authority, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so this is to D G N R. So to D G N R, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then another late file uh from Counselor Bartley that the legal department, this would be E, late file E, uh, that the legal give an opinion on whether the mayor has unilateral authority to waive fees and to select the fees he chooses to waive, uh, please have an opinion by eleven four twenty twenty, and that would be in reference to the waiving of fees for licenses, I do believe we got an email or a a, a notice on that.
Got a press release.
Press release.
Press release, there it is, that's what I was looking for. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, so uh, th- this is a, uh, I, I know we're half kidding, but uh, just on the last one, that was, that was sent to me um, a few hours ago by Marcos, and I think Mr. McGivern and Mr. McGee also received the same email, so I just had put under my name, uh, that was D, and then E, with, this is, this is an emergency. As somehow we have a press release saying that we can waive fees unilaterally. I mean, is anyone do- does anyone think that that's legal?
I don't know.
Uh, I, I, I for one don't, but, but the, the, the mayor can just waive. He can pick which fees he wants to waive out of a basket, and then he can waive them unilaterally. I mean, raise your hand if you think that's legal. So that's, that's my, that's my, so I, I, I think we need a legal opinion on, on now, and I think the mayor needs a legal opinion on it. Um, thank you.
So, motion is to receive, refer to legal, looking for response by eleven four twenty twenty.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Hey, Todd? Wait, Todd, if I could just give a message to Gladys, Gladys, look behind you, your light is, it looks like it's about to explode. I would take care of that.
Oh, a light, Michael?
Like a disco light.
Yeah.
No, but uh, in all seriousness, that, that could be, in, in all seriousness, that could be indicative of a short circuit in the wiring.
I wasn't joking, it is serious.
These are some, some, some that's gonna be replaced this week, and I think that one is giving up, it's every ten years, one of those, every ten years, because these are the long.
L I D.
Yeah, and then, and it's, they're coming up like every rule now lately.
Oh, well, I was just looking out for you. I was gonna have Mike Sullivan run up and save you.
Thank you, I'm sorry?
I was gonna have Mike Sullivan run up and save you.
Oh, thank you, guys, thank you for the question.
Oh, we have nothing else on the agenda. Uh, with that, motion would be to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Alright, everyone.
Hi, guys.
Good night.
Opposed? Have a good night, everyone, have a good week.
Have a good one.
Have a good one.